Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryski. Will you please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Zarowski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mr. Shannon?
Present.
Mrs. Zer-
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
We moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to remind everyone that this coming Saturday is our Pride and Shine Day. This is a, once a year in the spring when we go out and help individuals clean up homes throughout the community. That's those that may have a mobility limitation or perhaps a senior or some sort of financial distress where individuals just are not able to rake leaves and trim bushes and do everything you need to do for spring cleaning. So that's going to happen on Saturday. The time is 8:00 a.m. We're meeting at the First Church of Sterling Heights, and that's on Dequinder. We have about 75 volunteers that help out with this, and we clean up about 30 or so homes. This has now become a longstanding program and very popular, and those who get the assistance greatly appreciate it. We still are looking for volunteers if anyone in the audience or those at home would like to help out. Again, that is this Sunday starting at 8:00, excuse me, I said 8:00 a.m., I was wrong. It's 9:30 a.m. at First Church of Sterling Heights on Dequinder Road. And also, another reminder that we still have the Saturday cleanups going on, so you can take your waste that isn't normally accepted at the curb to our Public Works facility, and that is from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on May 5th, on Saturday, May 12th, and Saturday, May 19th. So please keep that in mind, that that option's available to you during your yard cleanups and garage and basement cleanups this spring. Also, just a reminder that our Sterling Heights Police Department Law Day Ceremony will be May 17th, and that is at 10:00 a.m. in the north entrance of City Hall, right in the courtyard area. So we'll look forward to seeing you there. And also, the very popular Plant Exchange will be on May 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Nature Center. We always have great attendance at this very popular program. Again, that's May 19th. And as I've been doing at the last few city council meetings, I wanted to give everyone another update on roads. There's a number of road items on the consent agenda this evening totaling millions of dollars, mostly related to neighborhood roads. So if I can draw your attention to the screen before you, some of you may have seen this already, but maybe not everyone. So there are many local roads that are being considered by city council this evening for approval. This road work will begin right away in the next couple of weeks, and you can see these are all local roads. What we've been mostly talking about the last couple of meetings is major roads. Now, local roads, just as a reminder, is funded by our Safe Streets Millage that was passed by voters in 2013, and that Safe Streets Millage generates about $3.1 million a year, and it goes to improve these roadways. And I wanted to show you just a brief scroll here of all the local roads that have been done since 2013 under the Safe Streets Millage, and this scroll does not include the previous screen I just showed you, the new projects that'll be underway very soon. So you can see that there's no question in the Safe Streets Millage is having a big impact on road improvements in the city and on neighborhoods, and it's nice to continue the program, of course. The Safe Streets runs for two more years until November 2019, and then it'll be up for renewal consideration by the community. And also, on the consent agenda this evening is kind of a unique project. We're piloting a new technology, if you will, on Sol Road. And the, you can see the boundary here. You probably can't read the street names. So it looks like it's from Cornell, which is a concrete area, to Alpina. This won't be on the asphalt area. We're able to take care of some of the asphalt repairs with our DPW department. But on the concrete area, what we're going to be doing with this company that will be hopefully approved this evening, they'll be taking out the repair work on the concrete that has deteriorated over the years, be completely jackhammering it out, scraping it all out, and then sealing it with an emulsion, and then putting an epoxy fill in the holes that then level out with the roadway. And it's trolled, so it's not just thrown down. This is epoxy that is kind of a liquid form, but even so, it is trolled like concrete. And so it hardens, and it gives a much better ride and a much better look to the roadway. It's about a third of the cost of our other repair work, about a third of the labor necessary to install it. The road only has to be closed for 10% to 20% of the time, and there's many other advantages to this. But we haven't used this technology in the city. It's rather new, so we thought Sol Road would be a good road to pilot it. If it works out well, we would likely continue this into our neighborhoods, providing a more lasting repair until we can actually get into some areas and completely improve the road with a reconstruction or repaving. So look forward to this work beginning on Sol in just the next week or two. And here's some more pictures of the finished product. And just in conclusion on roads, now let me just focus again on major roads. We spent some time talking about local roads, so here are all the major roads that are going to be improved in Sterling Heights over the next year. This is a rather daunting list. It is obviously going to cause a lot of congestion in the community, but 14-mile road, the desperately needed stretch between Ryan and Dequinder, will be done next spring. There's a big water main project that Warren has to complete first this fall-winter. 15 Mile's going to be done in Sterling Heights from Maple to Shaner. 17 Mile, we've already talked about, that'll be improved. 18 and a half is underway. 19 will be completely resurfaced from Hayes to Shaner. Dequinder's already underway. Dodge Park will start this summer from 15 to Mitchell Parkway. Canal will start in a couple of weeks. It'll be one of our larger projects in addition to Mound. M-59, the state's going to be beginning work on M-59 from Van Dyke to Delco. That's going to begin in June. Merrill will be done next spring. Mitchell Parkway in two areas, obviously, is Shaner intersection and over Van Dyke. Mound Road, the biggest project this summer, will be completely resurfaced from what would be 14 and a half to 18. Shaner's underway. Phase 2 of Shaner from Plum Brook to 19 Mile Road or north of 19 Mile Road will be done next spring. Stadler will be done this summer. Utica, there's two phases of Utica. First phase will be done this summer, and North Van Dyke will be done this summer as well, from the circle up to M-59. Some of that work will actually begin in the next couple of weeks. So you can see, these are the major road projects going on this summer and into next spring. This is by far one of the largest construction years we've had in the city's history in total, with some of the leftover projects from last year, with the local roads I just showed you, and all these projects. The actual work will be close to $50 million over the next year in Sterling Heights. Moving on, I wanted to provide everyone an update on this important project. There is a significant redevelopment that is going through the planning process over at 17 and Van Dyke. We expect that later on this year, this project will break ground. Essentially, this involves the construction of three new nationally branded hotels. It will include the demolition of the homes near Bacchus Drive continuing eastward to Bacchus Car Wash. All those buildings, including the Car Wash, will be demolished, and the hotels will be constructed along with a restaurant that'll be out near 17 Mile Road. Now, this configuration is likely to change, but this is a general idea of the development. It will be transformational for that corner. It is certainly going to clean up the corner. It'll be far more aesthetically pleasing, and will be a nice backdrop to the state-of-the-art enterprise park that's being developed as we speak. So the restaurant is being marketed heavily. If you look at some of the marketing material that's out on the internet now, they are targeting, the three-mile radius population is over 100,000. The median household income is 66,000. The traffic counts between 17 and Van Dyke is almost 100,000 vehicles a day, which is very high, so likely to attract a very desirable restaurant in that area. So look forward to some vastly needed improvements to that intersection. And again, it's just another indication of the enormous economic impact that manufacturing has on our city. A lot of this is being fueled by FCA and Ford and all the suppliers and everyone that's continuing to reinvest in manufacturing in southeastern Michigan, especially right here in Sterling Heights, equating to billions of dollars in new construction activity. And, Mayor, you'll be glad to know, that's the last item on my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation, and this is to adopt a resolution recognizing Saturday, May 12th, 2018, as letter carriers' food drive day in the city of Sterling Heights and encourage residents to donate food to this worthy cause. We have a presentation from the food drive coordinator for the National Association of Letter Carriers, Branch 4374, comes every year, Mike Sheridan. Mr. Sheridan, welcome. Thank you for being here again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is our 26th annual food drive, always taking place the second Saturday in May. Last year, the gracious citizens of Sterling Heights contributed over 85,000 pounds of food, filled up four semis, driven by the Teamsters of Local 299, who volunteer their time to transport that food to the Macomb Food Program Warehouse at Hall Road in Grossbeck. All that food is distributed throughout Macomb County, a network of 50 pantries. You will be getting, Kroger has donated 800,000 plastic bags. We have printed up 125 million postcards. Those will not be going just to Sterling Heights, but throughout the nation. On behalf of the letter carriers of Sterling Heights, we want to thank you for improving the roads in our city that we drive on every day, and especially the resurfacing of Mound Road. We're looking forward to that. And we have, we want to acknowledge that the redo of Dodge Park, we are having our branch picnic for our union local there in August, and we look forward to celebrating the opening in June 28th of Dodge Park, an excellent venue for recreation for the city. This food drive is important because the school lunch program ends at the end of the school year in June. That's why it's targeted for that second Saturday in May. This food, the Macomb Food Program Warehouse gets over 450,000 pounds of food in that one day. That takes them all the way through September and beyond. So all that food goes to the needy of Macomb County, a network of 50 pantries. We want to thank the Teamsters for their help. We are always looking for volunteers, so I'll be looking for your faces at the back of the Sterling Heights Post Office anytime after 12:00 noon on Saturday, May 12th. It is backbreaking work, but it is very rewarding work. And I have had people that have seen this on your council news program and have shown up at that post office to help out. We get an army of volunteers, not only sons and daughters, spouses, the Vietnam veterans help out, Baker College helps out as well. So we are always looking for more volunteers. When you look at the back of the post office around 4 o'clock, it looks like you're going to be there till midnight, but we do get it cleaned up, and the latest we've been there is 10:00 p.m., but we're usually out of there about 7:00 o'clock. So, May 12th, Saturday, May 12th, always the second Saturday in May, 1.5 billion pounds collected over the last 25 years. The last five years have been over 75 million pounds of food throughout the nation. So 10,000 cities across America, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mike. We appreciate you being here. A very worthy cause. We're happy to support it. Counsel, there is a suggested action. Would somebody like to make the motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to adopt the resolution recognizing Saturday, May 12th, 2018, as letter carriers' food drive day in the city of Sterling Heights and encouraging residents to donate food to this worthy cause.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
No, it is really a good cause, and my sign's ready to go up where it says, you know, what is it, "Food Drive this Saturday"? So my sign's ready, so I'll put it up for you.
Counsel, anyone else on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck, and again, thank you, Mike, for this very worthy cause. Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, and this is the 2018-2019 budget public hearing and adoption. We have a presentation from our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Varney. Mrs. Varney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Kachubski, and city residents. The city charter requires that a formal public hearing be held on the budget before its adoption. So first, a brief overview of the budget highlights that we have discussed. The proposed budget was submitted to the city council on March 29th, 2018, and for the past six weeks, the budget has been available for public inspection on the city's website, at the city clerk's office, and the public library. In addition, the city council held two public budget workshops on April 10th and April 24th to review the proposed spending plan. Now, let's briefly review. The proposed budget totals $231.5 million, and the breakdown between the major funds can be seen here. The total budget increased 25 million or 12.1% over last year, and the primary components of the increase include increased spending of $6.5 million on road repairs and improvements, an additional $7.5 million of spending on parks and recreation as a result of the recreating Recreation Millage, an investment of $7 million in facilities improvements in the police department, the public library, the district court, and City Hall, and technology improvements across all city buildings. An increased debt service of $2.2 million for the bonds to finance these improvements and for additional road bonds. And finally, increases in personnel costs due to contractual wage increased, increased pension costs, and eight additional full-time employees. The general fund budget totals $105.3 million and includes a $1.1 million increase to general fund balance. And the major increases over the prior year include an additional $6.5 million transfer to major roads, the debt payment on the facilities bond of $1.4 million, increased pension contributions of $1.1 million, and wage increases. The total general fund balance is projected to be $23.4 million at the end of fiscal year 2019, or 22.2% of general fund expenditures. And although you can see from the graph that fund balance, as a percent of expenditures is dipping, fund balance dollars are still increasing, and this is due to the increase in expenditures due to the large general fund transfer to major roads this year. We are still on track to reach our fund balance goal of 25% of general fund expenditures by fiscal year 2020. Through the use of the proposed one-year, one-mil increase, additional dedicated funding from the general fund, and bond proceeds, a total of $20 million of road funding is included in the proposed budget. As Mr. Vanderpoel explained earlier, residents can visit the cone section of the city website or pick up this Cone Zone flyer at City Hall to view a listing of the numerous roads that will be repaired or reconstructed in the upcoming year. And the budget continues investing in new and replacement capital items. Just for example, there's 14 new police vehicles, a fire engine, a tandem axle dump truck with plow, and a sanitary sewer camera truck. Other capital equipment includes replacement radios for all police and fire personnel, the replacement of the city phone system, an emergency vehicle preemption system, and a total of 71 replacement personal computers as part of the city five-year replacement cycle. And infrastructure improvements include six replacement emergency warning sirens, a replacement roof for the salt barn at DPW, and a replacement generator for fire station number three. And the budget also funds a net increase of eight personnel, including two school resource officers, two sewer laborers, and a teen librarian. And the budget continues to fully fund long-term liabilities, ensuring continuing progress toward full funding. The city tax rate will increase 1.0246 mil primarily as a result of the one-time, one-mil increase to fund major road improvements, and also an increase to the police and fire pension millage, however, still remains one of the lowest tax rates in Macomb County. And although the average selling price for a single-family home increased 5.7% last year, taxable values will increase only 2.1%. And the average city tax bill will be $96 a month for all city services, an increase of only $8 per month. The appropriations ordinance is a legislative vehicle that allows for the expenditure of funds throughout the city. The ordinance reflects the city council's plans for expenditures and revenues, and sets the total property tax millage rate at 17.1804 to fund those expenditures. The appropriations ordinance was introduced at the April 10th council meeting, and since then, we've had the following changes. $232,600 was added to the general fund to fund two school resource officers. However, since this cost is shared with Utica Community Schools, the general fund balance contribution was only reduced by $62,600. And there were also slight changes to the millage rates since the introduction, as final taxable values were received from assessing. And with these changes, Mr. Mayor, the final amended appropriations ordinance is now ready to be adopted.
All right. Thank you very much. Mrs. Varney, at this time, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Marshalones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Vanderpoel. My name's Harry Marshalones, resident of the city for a long time. In listening to the presentation by Miss Varney, she seems to have everything pretty well covered, except I think I overheard something about a tax increase, which would be like $8 a month, 96 bucks a year. I think, you know, it seems like these tax increases come pretty regular, and rather than give us a complete hearing on what the bottom line's going to be, we keep getting it fed to us with little spoons. But I think when we have these, we need to have a sunset clause, and I think right now, especially with all the stuff, the tax money that we spent for the recreation and for the roads, the police, the fire, everything else, we should have a moratorium on new construction, new projects, and limit the spending for the next X number of years to maintaining the stuff that we already have. Sterling Heights isn't short of anything. We seem to have, we got parks, we got all kinds of neat stuff. But it seems like we can always come up with something else that's going to cost us a few more bucks, and then we got to talk about another tax increase. I think we ought to just limit our spending for the next X number of years to maintaining what we already have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshalones. Anyone else on this item? Mr. Smith?
Paul Smith, Sterling Heights. I guess more or less to echo what Mr. Marshalone said, having sat through these presentations, it's quite obvious to me that out of $231 million, there's well more than 10% in discretionary spending that's being blown on things that we don't really need, like buying new desk chairs and furnitures for inside the police department, and buying a $40,000 paddy wagon in case once in a while we need to take somebody that the police have arrested and throw in the backseat of the police car with handcuffs on, and instead of taking them to county jail the same way, we need a $40,000 tumbleweed wagon to take them in. People don't like the streets. They don't like the potholes and wrecking their cars, and we're spending 20, 25, 30 million on things that people don't really want. If you people represent the people, let's fix the streets and don't raise the taxes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mayor Protem Zarowski.
Okay, let's get to where we need to be. Be it ordained to adopt the annual appropriations ordinance as amended for the 2018-2019 fiscal year with the following property tax millage rates: 10.4940 mils for operations, 1.042 mils for refuse collection, 2.1279 mils for police and fire pension, 2.4678 mils for safe streets, .9516 mils for recreating recreation, and .091 mils for public improvements proposal F for total property tax levy of 17.1804 mils.
Support.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Mrs. Zarowski?
Yes.
I caught that you, in the last one for public improvements proposal F, you said .091 when it reads .097.
.0971, excuse me. Thank you.
Mr. Kachubski, any recommendation there?
Was that just an error?
It was just, it was just an error with not being able to read small print. My apologies.
Do we need to make any sort of formal action, or can we all, we all understand that we're voting on a motion? that we're voting on a motion for .0971 mils for public improvement proposal F?
Yes, sure.
Okay, without any objection there. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
No, we have gone through this budget in depth and very thoroughly. I have no other questions.
Okay, I didn't catch you supported it, but I'll open it up to whoever'd like to be next. Anybody?
I'm fine. We've talked about this. I understand it.
Anyone else on council? If not, I would, I would just say one comment. Mr. Marshalones said that he would have appreciated if we would have given a full hearing on this. We had two full hearings on it, the, I believe, the second and the fourth Tuesdays in April, and we were here. And in the second one, Mr. Jefferson was the only member of the community who was here in the audience, but I'm sure many people watched it at home. So we, we had, this is our third hearing on the budget adoption. I think it's been discussed at great length, and I'm very comfortable with it. And so without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving the brownfield redevelopment plan submitted by Liberty Park Commerce Center LLC as an amendment to the city's base brownfield redevelopment plan in accordance with Public Act 381 of 1996 as amended. We do have a presentation from our senior economic development advisor, Luke Bonner. Mr. Bonner.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and Mr. Vanderpool, members of council. Today for your consideration is the adoption of a brownfield redevelopment plan submitted by Liberty Park Commerce Center LLC as an amendment to the city's base brownfield redevelopment plan in accordance with Public Act 381 of 1996, also known as the Brownfield Redevelopment Act. Here representing Liberty Park Commerce Center LLC is the developer, Ashley Capital, Kevin Hegg, the vice president, Dennis Schultz, the senior construction manager, and then along with them is also Mark Quimby, other environmental consultant from SME. I thought, since we have not had a brownfield redevelopment project, I thought it'd be good at least to go through a little bit of history of how the brownfield authority came to be, what its purpose is, some of the projects we've worked on, and then get more detail into the plan itself. The city established a brownfield authority December of 2000, and that is in accordance with essentially the Brownfield Redevelopment Act, which is 381 of 1996 as amended. The act establishes a board. The board then evaluates plans that are consistent with the purpose of the act, which is cleaning and managing environmentally challenged properties, increasing the taxable value of those properties, and creating jobs. The primary economic development tool that's used is called tax increment financing. And essentially, that allows the brownfield authority to retain the new taxes based on the new increase in value from the redevelopment of the project, to then reimburse the eligible party, in this case, Liberty Park Commerce Center LLC, on their cost to investigate, clean up, mitigate, or any other method of mitigation or elimination of contamination on a property. Our previously adopted brownfield plans have included, which is going back some ways now, the first one was the Sims Road LLC, which is now home to the Forcia Seating Facility on Sims Road, which created 150 jobs. The Macomb Group redeveloped the former vacant Collins and Aikman Manufacturing Facility on 15 Mile Road into their new headquarters, which they've grown quite nicely into. They now have about 400 jobs there. The largest to date has been the BAE Systems redevelopment of the former TRW chassis plant, which is about a 250,000 square foot ground vehicle center of excellence, with 350 new jobs and growing. Cassidy Steel on Mound Road redeveloped the former Moore Flame Cutting Building, which brought 60 jobs to the facility. The Chrysler Paint Shop expansion back in 2011, the redevelopment there was part of an overall statewide incentive package that helped induce the $1.4 billion of investment as FCA was emerging shop out of bankruptcy. And all of those projects are closed and completed, and there are no other active brownfield plans. So this would be our first brownfield plan activated in some time. Just to give some history on Liberty Park, June 2016, Liberty Park was marketed for sale, and then at that time, soon put under contract by FedEx. In February of 2017, FedEx officially backed out of purchasing Liberty Park due to environmental concerns on the property. In March of 2017, that's when the owner, Armin Collegian, officially closed Liberty Park as, again, to market the sales in industrial property. And in August 2017, Ashley Capital began investigating the Sterling Heights industrial market, but also the Liberty Park property and its feasibility for redevelopment. Ashley Capital has closed on the property first quarter of 18. They received a rezoning on the property to M1, M2, Heavy Industrial on February 20, 2018, city council action. And then the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority adopted the brownfield redevelopment plan as well as the reimbursement agreement on March 26, 2018. Liberty Park Commerce Center LLC is the applicant. They're wholly owned and managed by Ashley Capital. Ashley Capital was founded in 1984 and has become one of the largest privately-held real estate and investment companies in the United States. Based in New York, primary office in Detroit, they have offices in Atlanta, Chicago, Grand Rapids, and Norfolk, Virginia. Ashley Capital works on underperforming industrial and office properties. They develop and manage new industrial parks. They assist corporations in repositioning real estate portfolios, and they advise financial institutions and tax-exempt investors on asset enhancements. Ashley Capital's current portfolio stands at 22 million square feet with properties concentrated throughout the eastern half of the United States. And their tenants include Amazon, LG Electronics, Brightwater Interiors, and Penske Logistics. Their closest project in proximity to Sterling Heights, well, actually, was the LaPari Foods Building in Warren, but in terms of a industrial park, it's Hazel Park, where they redeveloped a contaminated site almost similar and identical to the issues that are faced here at Liberty Park. And that facility houses Amazon, LG Electronics, and Brightwater Interiors. The property that is under consideration is the former Liberty Park softball facility. It also includes the former 12-acre Stainzioni property, as we refer to, off of 14 Mile Road. For a short period of time, Kemp Construction acquired the property and then sold the property. Ashley Capital is part of this project. The proposed use is a 550,000 square foot mixed industrial facility that can be a multi-tenant facility, or it can house a single user. This is what I would call the bread and butter for Ashley Capital and all the projects that they do, significantly higher ceilings, 30-foot clear, and they have the capability to accommodate multiple tenants within that building. We expect the overall project investment to be roughly $38 million and the ability to create up to 400 to 500 jobs once complete. The brownfield eligibility for Liberty Park comes in a couple of different forms. One, the biggest reason, there is a methane-producing unregulated landfill on the property that dates back to the 1960s. The Liberty Park softball field essentially acted as a cap for that contamination between the fields and the parking lots. There's also significant soil issues. The contaminants are listed arsenic, cadmium, chromium, lead, selenium, silver, on and on through everything that's on the periodic table of charts. The future taxes on this project, as I mentioned, for what a brownfield redevelopment authority can do for this particular project, the proposed remedy is to create a methane barrier that will go under the footprint of the building. There will be a methane ventilation intrusion system that will basically surround the building that'll allow any methane that comes up from the soil to essentially burp itself out without being caught into a building. And then there's some soil management issues that will have to take place on the property as well. The new project will certainly increase the new taxes over and above what's being paid today. Liberty Park Commerce Center LLC is responsible for paying all of those costs to manage the environmental conditions upfront. And as the brownfield redevelopment authority works, like I mentioned, the authority has the ability to retain those taxes, and then over a period of time reimburse Liberty Park Commerce Center for those, for those costs. In the plan, the total brownfield eligible activities that have been outlined is roughly $6.9 million. The brownfield plan proposes capturing future new taxes for a maximum of 15 years. Those new taxes are essentially everybody. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Act requires that all of the millages are subject to capture under this, which includes the city, the county, community college, HCMASmart, intermediate school district. We will be submitting a separate application for state education and local schools capture, which is eligible through the MDEQ. All of the taxing jurisdictions continue to receive tax revenue from the property as it is today. All of the new taxes generated from the project are retained by the brownfield authority, which we estimate to be between $600,000 and $800,000 annually, which would be more likely a nine-to-11-year brownfield redevelopment plan. And then the last thing on here is that there are no tax abatements anticipated will be applied to this project. We also have a development agreement that was approved by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Essentially, it outlines the obligations of the two parties. Liberty Park Commerce Center is required to submit substantial paid invoices, their proof of payment, waivers of liens, and the city of Sterling Heights reviews the eligible costs. We inspect the invoices and backup material. Those are reviewed by myself, finance, city auditor, and then as long as the LPCC is in good standing with the city-state and no default settlement agreement, we then release the reimbursement as taxes are paid over time. So with that, my presentation has ended, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bonner. The applicant is here. If there's anything you want to say now, or the petitioner, I should say, if there's anything you want to say now, welcome to say something. If not, we can call you up if the council has any questions for you. I'll leave it up to your discretion.
No, just to thank the council, we see the opportunity, we look forward to it. We need to be able to deliver, and hopefully they're gonna have a generator, that's what we hope for, and we'll be delivered for you, and we look forward to the opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to adopt the resolution approving the brownfield redevelopment plan submitted by Liberty Park Commerce Center LLC as an amendment to the city's base brownfield redevelopment plan in accordance with Public Act 381 of 1996 as amended.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Zarco?
I just want to thank Mr. Bonner. I think you explained to us exactly what's going to happen there. I'm excited because this is going to be redeveloped, and, you know, we, it was turned down once by FedEx because they were afraid of it, so we're really grateful that you decided to take a chance on this. And it will be an improvement to that corner. So thank you so much for investing in Sterling Heights.
Mr. Adkey, anything?
I just want to second Mrs. Zarco's comments. I think that this is a tremendous proposal put together because environmental contamination scares off so many investors, and I think this will improve our city while remediating the environmental impact.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Bonner. Mr. Bonner, a couple of power points ago, you had, it's a 15-year maximum. Can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
Okay, so we're gonna capture the future new taxes for a maximum of 15 years. And then down below, you say a nine-to-11-year plan is more likely. What dictates that?
So the tax capture that's outlined in the plan is 15 years. What dictates ultimately how quickly we're able to reimburse all of those eligible costs really boils down to what the value of the building is after it's built, and then essentially what the tax generation is. These are generally estimates based on comparisons that we have with other similar industrial projects that are built. So we do a projection based on that. And from our best estimate of what we've seen before, we think that this project can be completed within nine to 11 years, but the plan goes 15 years to allow some flexibility and variation in the values of the, of the project.
Okay, so after that is complete, then those taxes revert back to the city, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have nothing further. Good luck. I thank you for cleaning up a toxic site that is long overdue being cleaned up. So thank you very much. I have nothing further.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, I would just say the same thing. You know, congratulations. Welcome to the city of Sterling Heights. We're very excited to have you here and investing in the city. You know, that's a great industrial site, and we look forward to seeing what you guys have to bring to Sterling Heights. So thank you very much. Good luck. With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Costin.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Marshalones?
Again, my name's Harry Marshalones. I'm here tonight to personally thank the four ladies on our council for their support on the drain issue that came up. We really appreciated the fact that you looked into it and came up with a excellent response. Also, Commissioner Joseph Romano, District Four, he sent letters to the various county people telling them that it was a bad plan. We thank him also. I do, I do want to think of one thing, though, that I think is very important, and that is that sometimes, I know the council and the mayor and the manager, Vanderpool, know that we have 130,000 residents in Sterling Heights, and the decisions that you folks make affects a great number of them. But, you know, when we start looking at the city as a whole and how many square miles it is, we also have to look at very small geographic areas like we had with the Moslem Temple. That was a small area, but it had about 600 people that were really upset, and that's about 95% of them. And anytime you have that kind of percentile in a small area, you have a problem. That would be like the President of the United States saying that, "I understand Michigan wants to protect its Great Lakes, but Utah really needs water." And he's, and he's got 50 states to worry about. Anytime any resident in the city of Sterling Heights has a problem, ladies and gentlemen, you have a problem. And we look to you for the solution to that problem, not a reason not to resolve it. So I would like to make sure that in the future, we start, we, we address these things in small area issues, and because it affects that area, but it doesn't affect anything on 19 Mile Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marshalones. Anyone else? Mr. Jefferson?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. First of all, over the weekend, we lost a great Sterling Heights City Warrior, Dr. Steve. It should have been some kind of word or mention about him at the beginning of the meeting because not only for Sterling Heights, but for it to the whole Macomb County area, he was a, he was a tireless advocate for the whole community, just not Sterling Heights. The next thing, Mr. Vanderpool, I have a couple of questions. Maybe you can answer them later on, or call me up later on, but one is, when do we redo the city ordinances here? When do we really look over those? Some of them haven't been updated in years. And another thing is, when are we going to update the city charter? I believe the city charter needs to be updated. For example, we have to get like 1,200 signatures to be on the, it was like 800 signatures, but we all know you need like 1,200 signatures to get onto the ballot to be, to run for council or to the mayor. But meanwhile, in the city of Detroit, to be mayor, the largest city in this state, you only need 500 signatures. you only need 500 signatures. That seems kind of out of whack and out of balance. Another thing is, we did pretty good on the commercial end. It's time to refocus ourselves on the retail end. Tonight, Mr. Vanderpool said that we're getting three new hotels in Sterling Heights. There's got to be six to seven of them that I know about, brand, making new hotels in Sterling Heights. Where are those people going to spend their disposable dollars? Why can't they use them in Sterling Heights? We had Luke here. There's no reason why Livonia can get a Wahlburger and not before Sterling Heights. Same with Shake Shack. Chick-fil-A probably would have saved Lakeside Mall. We're going to have to start taking our focus and looking someplace differently, that's differently. Now, Mike Rackey, I had a chance to speak to one of your constituents, a good constituent of yours, over the weekend, Charles Forrest. Me and Chuck, we go back a long way, I mean, a long, long way. And he said that you were a pretty upfront guy. I don't think he knew I knew you from all the years of sitting out here. I don't think he knew that. And I was like, yeah, he's a pretty upfront guy. And he told me to ask you one-on-one questions that maybe you could answer them. And I told him I was going to come up here on Tuesday and do it. He said he didn't think that was going to be proper, but I told him when I ask questions, it's not for me, it's for everyone else in this city. So I don't want you to tell me personally. I just want, I want you to come up tonight because your constituents want to know these answers. My question is to you, if you found that Jeff Garapie posts, a couple of posts, you found those to be disgusting or disgraceful or whatever, why did you not say anything? Two, if you find those posts disgusting, how do you pay a man $40? How do you pay a man any money to represent you? And they can turn around and say whatever they want to about you, say whatever they want to about a large constituents or people here in this city? So hopefully you can answer that question tonight for your constituents and the people who voted for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Mr. Smith.
Can we get a camera on this? Does this, we still have that technology?
Can we still have that technology?
Unfortunately, we have to tonight commemorate the passing of a great friend and neighbor, Stojan Nemofski, Dr. Steve. Dr. Steve is born in Yugoslavia in 1956, moved to Sterling Heights in 1987. In 91, 93 Macedonia split from Yugoslavia, and he identified himself as a Macedonian. He was a candidate for Michigan House of Representatives in 96, and unfortunately, last Friday, he passed away. He's a key member of the ethnic community. He was advisor and interpreter to newly arrived legal immigrants from Eastern Europe, including Yugoslavia, the USSR, and Czechoslovakia. During the late 80s, early 90s, three countries disintegrated into 24 countries, and a lot of people came to this country. Yugoslavia, or excuse me, Macedonia became a tiny nation, and a lot of these immigrants were their former enemies from Europe, but he stuck up, stuck up for them and helped Americanize them. He's active in cancer research. He had one project where Universal Ambulance had discarded an old ambulance, and he took it over with the intention of shipping it over to Macedonia. I'm not sure if it ever got done, but he got started at it. He liked to speak in public, get his picture taken with people, and see lots of different people from different groups, some of them that would compete with each other. We had him with the chief of police. One of our big events in 2016, three broke candidates, myself, Karen Springer, and Dr. Steve. We ran in heavily contested primaries. We didn't spend any money, and we beat entrenched incumbents that spent hundreds of million dollars to try to compete with us. It was quite a victory. Of the three, only Karen won the election. But again, different events. I had a picture of my wife there with him at the Trump rally, working the crowds every place he went, out campaigning for state rep, talking to Fox News with a truckload of pictures we got from Sewicki and Sons. His fundraiser, one of the fun things that a lot of the other communities, Warren and Romeo and Shelby Township, had candidate interviews. This guy here, Ron, was interviewer for Warren, and Dr. Steve got him so impressed that he emceed Dr. Steve's fundraiser. One we're real proud of, he had his event at the Macedonian Center. Again, we had a big crowd, like a who's who of local politics here, and Dr. Steve wanted to do a photo op. It was okay, let's get lime. Says, "No, we're going to do it in the church." I'm going, "Dr. Steve, they won't let you do this in the church?" Says, "Yeah, they will, sure. The priests will host the thing." So we got the photo operated on the altar, and that became the keystone of his campaign. We had a goodly team of winning candidates. We got, everybody in the picture won. In the primary, he won by a 54 to 46 majority. In the general election against Henry Yanis, it went the other way, but he was gracious about it. I guess not everybody loved Dr. Steve. Some of his opponents did a Guy Fawkes routine on one of his campaign pictures, but Dr. Steve, as usual, took that in good nature and added the poster to his collection. So thanks a lot, and it's too bad, after 31 years, I think he's probably one of the most positive influences in town and in the true sense of the ethnic community. He stuck up not just for his own people, but he was a linkage between his people, others from the ethnic community, and between the ethnic community and mainstream of society. So goodbye, Dr. Steve, and thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, for that. Anyone else like to go under communications from citizens? I'll take you, Salem, first, and then I'll get you next. Mrs. Krebs.
Good evening, everybody. Just a suggestion. In my old country, Middle East, after surfacing the roads with concrete, they add a layer of asphalt mixed with rubber that they get from old tires. It becomes so smooth and believable, it covers all the holes that are on the road. I am on 17 and Mount. We suffered a lot because they come every week, every two weeks, to fill the holes from the Mount 17 going west. Only go 30 feet, you will see the holes, the same thing. I suggest that using this asphalt with rubber that they get from tires will help a lot. I don't know, of course, the situation in Michigan is different from Middle East. There it's warmer than it is here, but still, the best way is to add a layer of asphalt and that's mixed with the rubber that they get from tires. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Salem. Mrs. Krebs.
Good evening, council. Thank you. I just want to publicly thank all the councilwomen for speaking, for hearing the people of the drain and our concerns and speaking on our behalf. We really, really appreciate it. And I want to apologize for my misbehavior and outbursts at the last city council. It was unbecoming, and that's all I can say. I can only apologize and try to do better at future ones. And I also want to address that somebody last time had spoke that the park, linear park, would be a progressive idea for the space. I don't think, I don't believe parks are progressive. What I think would be more progressive and would benefit everybody in Sterling Heights in Macomb County would be something that's in the range of renewable energy. We have large space, very wide open space, lots of wind. We have good sun exposure, solar, something that we could collect for the citizens and give back to the citizens where everybody can actually benefit and not just those that live directly around that area. Something to consider, and I've contacted Ms. Miller and told her I do have myself to volunteer and other volunteers that could canvass the people that actually live on the drain to see if they have any objections or any other ideas that we could do with the space so people aren't arguing, because it really did split a lot of us up. So just want to let you guys know that. Thank you again, councilwomen, for speaking, hearing us and speaking on our behalf, and looking forward to making something that everybody can benefit off of from that drain. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Krebs. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion. Go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Kachubski, anything?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counsel, any reports? New business?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Just briefly, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool, when you listed the number of residential streets that are going to be under repair this, or under construction this summer, is there a plan to notify those residents of closures or parking problems that are going to occur because of it?
Mr. Vanderpool. Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, there is indeed. In fact, we send out a detailed letter, much like we did for Canal. All the residents along Canal got a detailed letter. 3,000 letters went out explaining all the construction timeframes and when they'll have access, when they wouldn't have access to their driveway and so on. On local roads, we do the exact same thing and work even more hands-on with residents in those cases. So the short answer is absolutely.
And is it usually two weeks before the project that those notifications go out?
It's anywhere from two to four weeks out. In the case of Canal, it was about three weeks out, but we're getting a good jumpstart. So I would try to do all that we could to give them more notice. You know, three to four weeks would be highly desirable.
Okay. I know some residents were concerned that maybe they'd get a day's notice and not have a game plan set in place. So I appreciate that, and I have nothing further. Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Okay. Just a couple little things, and I did want to thank everyone for speaking. And just a few things. Yes, Mr. Marshall, you are correct. All politics is local, so we do try very hard to listen to everything and weigh it with the greatest impact of the local residents or some things going in, who's going to be most greatly affected, not just because it's good for the city, but who else is going to be affected. So that's always extremely important. And I want to thank Mr. Smith. Don't fall over, because yes, Dr. Steve was a good man, and I didn't always see eye to eye on him, and that was the best part of him, is you didn't have to see eye to eye with him to have his kind heart and his opinion go through, be presented. But he was always gentle, and he was always respectful, and he is going to be missed. And he died very young, 61. I didn't realize he was that young, and I am sorry to see him go because he was a good man. And so this was the time that we have to speak to the people. We couldn't bring this up beforehand, but we do want, I did want to make sure that we said something tonight. So thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, I will also say, you know, I'm not going to eulogize Dr. Steve. I think, Mr. Smith, you said it well, and I'll leave it at that. I appreciate your comments tonight. No matter what your opinion of Dr. Steve was, he certainly was a fixture in Sterling Heights, and he deserves some recognition here. So I appreciate what you did. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported. No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.